Good evening and welcome to December 5th, 2017, Claussen City Council Meeting. This meeting is being called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, thank you for the blessings you have provided to us as individuals, as families, and as organizations that fashion our city and state into a community of those who care and share with each other. We pray for all those who guide and govern, help them and us to know and do the things that are right and fair in making vital decisions. Save us from violence, discord, and confusion, from pride and arrogance. May there be peace and justice at home. Each day brings new challenges, and we give thanks for the opportunities and abilities to problem-solve through thought and action. In addition, please keep watch over our military, veterans, law enforcement, and other safety services officers. Thank you.
Amen.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Woolley. Councilmember Ayers.
Here.
Councilmember Malone.
Here.
Councilmember Moffett.
Present.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Here.
The first thing on the agenda is consideration of approving the following consent agenda. It's the minutes of our regular city council meeting on Tuesday, November 21st, 2017.
Madam Mayor, I move the consent agenda be approved as listed.
Support.
Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Malone.
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett.
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Yes.
Mayor Woolley.
Yes. And the consent agenda has been approved. The next item is considering of approving the amortization extension agreement between municipal employees retirement systems of Michigan, known as MERS, and the city of Claussen. This is the second step in requesting the State of Michigan Department of Treasury to allow us to sell bonds to fund our unfunded actuarial accrued liability, or UAAAL, for defined benefit retirement plans with MERS. Mark, would you like to talk a little bit about this?
Yeah, and I guess seems to be a hot phrase now. This is a fluid situation because of what's going on in Lansing right now, but this is our next step in moving toward trying to bond with the State of Michigan through Treasury approval for pension obligation bonds. We've been working on this for several months. MERS did do an actuarial study at our request and has granted permission for us to extend our amortization period from the current eight and 11 years to 15 years. And really, all that does is it takes the amount of unfunded accrued liability we owe and divides it by a larger number, which for us decreases our payment commitment because it's been accelerating at a rapid rate since we closed to new hires for all divisions in 2004. The police were the last group to join in, and what that means is all of our new hires since 2004 are the police and prior to that, since '99 for ASME and non-union employees, are on a defined contribution plan. So we don't have those legacy costs. We simply provide retirement income for the individuals hired since then while they're working, and then once they're gone, there's no longer any obligation of the city. But the defined benefit pension plan's been in place for years before that, and currently we're about 43 percent funded. Our unfunded accrued liability sits around 14 and 1/2 million. Market value's up near 15 million. So what we're hoping to do is to petition the State for bonds. And by selling bonds over 15 years, we actually save money. And the reason that's the case is our interest we would earn, what would happen is we'd take $15 million in bonds, send it to MERS, and be fully funded. That money then earns interest through MERS's investment accounts. We would likely, their projected income rate is around 775. Our bonds would probably cost around 4 and 1/2. So we're actually increasing funding in our pension by borrowing the money. So in the long run, we save money, and although we're extending the timeframe, we still save money. And what we're trying to do is get this through, and this is the next step, approving the MERS report and extending our amortization period to 15 years is the next step. And then the following step would be a workshop with council, which will propose a date to council this evening. And then after that, we have a referendum period, and then we present, we actually have to present to, directly to the State Treasury. The reason this is fluid is there is a proposal, there's actually a bill, which would change the sunset provision on Public Act 34, which allows us from December 31st of 2018 to December 31st of 2017, which of course would not allow us enough time to go through the process. So I did speak with our representatives. I spoke with Martin Nolenberg yesterday, sent he and Marty Nolenberg as well, our senator, a letter with our concern if they pull the rug out from under us by changing the sunset provision to 25 days, 26 days from now. They're both working on it. I did have a follow-up call with Martin Nolenberg today along with the State Treasurer and explained our situation. They're looking for, I guess I'll term it a loophole, to allow anyone who's in the process to continue the process even if they set this deadline. So they're trying to come up with language that would allow us to continue this process and bond. For us, it would be very important to be able to do this because it is going to be a saving in the long term for us. And the biggest benefit for Claussen is it fixes our payments because MERS has accelerated. This 11 and 8 years is decreasing a year every year, which is increasing our payment commitment to MERS. We haven't made any changes to the benefits, I believe, since 2004. So, and we're not going to make any more changes. They're locked in where they're at. So this is the next step in the process. Hopefully, we'll get that language so we can continue the process, including a workshop, and then petition to the State of Michigan. We'll have to do a financial analysis report, submit that to Treasury, and once that is done, the State would then either grant us permission or deny us permission to sell the bonds. So I'm really hoping that we get some language in place that would protect us. I feel pretty good about what I heard from our reps and from the State Treasurer today is that they are going to try and work with communities that are already in the process, which we are. So I'm really hoping that language, either leave the language, the sunset provision alone by deleting it, or they put a more realistic timeframe sunset of maybe June 30th of next year, but allow us to get through the process nonetheless, even if they change the date since we're well into it. So this is the next step, and all you're doing tonight is agreeing to the 15-year amortization schedule that MERS is granting us, which would extend, would actually lower our payments in the beginning. They would still accelerate toward the end. And the main reason for wanting to get the bonds is so that we can fix that payment over the next 15 years, and that helps us balance our budget.
Mr. Pollak, you spoke with Representative Howellack yesterday as well.
Yes. Yeah. Representative Howellack was the first one I talked to during the day yesterday, and he listened to my concerns. The entire package is problematic for a lot of communities. The other item that they're throwing out is OPEB funding, which is really retiree healthcare for Claussen. Once again, we closed that to new hires back in 2005. So we've been funding our active employees for retiree healthcare that they will pay for, but we're funding it while they work. So legacy costs there have been eliminated again, but we still have a commitment to those that are under our retirement healthcare plan. We've made changes and decreased the costs, but we have an unfunded OPEB liability of $14 million. But we can pay that as we go. We've been successful with that ever since we started. So I explained that to him. The bill says they are going to require OPEB funding of 30 percent at least by 2019. And for us, that would be $4 million. We don't have $4 million to pre-fund it. So I'm hoping again that they'll, even if they adopt this legislation, I'm hoping they'll have some wiggle room. There's a lot of discussion going on, a lot of back and forth in Lansing right now. The biggest issue is the one-size-fits-all that they're trying to make work again. They've got to be flexible in these plans because some communities are in good shape. They don't need any help. Other communities need a lot of help, and this could give us some, but they can't do the one-size-fits-all. So I'm really hoping that they look at the impact of everything. The other thing was, there's, if you get all the way through, I think it's a five-step process, there is a emergency manager kick-in again at three, a three-member board that would, I guess, come in and try and help you. Really, what they would do is make you make cuts so that you can fund it. So it's concerning. It's concerning. I understand the premise of what they're doing, but it's concerning that they're trying the one-size-fits-all. But I had good conversations with both, and they both understand where we're coming from, and they're both working toward, at least since we're in the process, at least getting that part of it solidified in the language so that we can continue.
I had contact with Representative Howellack yesterday and Senator Nolenberg's office as well. I know Representative Howellack spoke with the governor and the treasurer today as well, so I know they're pushing for us, and it's something we need. In regards to this resolution here, is this something that you would recommend even if we were not able to acquire the bonding?
I would because, again, it lowers our payments on the front end. The accelerated payments, just to give example, right now, we're paying just under $1.6 million a year into MERS. To go back a way, when I started here in 2000, our payments to MERS were about $600,000. So we're paying over $1 million more into the fund. It's commitments made, so understandable, but what MERS did is when you close to new hires, they've made changes over the years to make you accelerate funding because they want you to get to 100 percent. The problem is, is the increases from year to year, as this amortization period drops, we have to pay more every year. And the estimates are next year, we would go to 1.75, then we would go to just over 1.9, and then we'd be over 2 million. And as we've seen in our budgets, we don't generate enough additional revenue to cover those costs. So this extended amortization does allow us to lower the payments, at least on the front end. We would actually have a lower payment if you approve this and the bond fails even. Our payment would be lower than what we're paying now because we're extending that timeframe. It would be around 1.3 million as instead of the 1.6. But the bonding helps us lock in a payment around 1.4 million over 15 years. And like I say, with that fully funded bond sent to MERS, we're earning interest around 8 percent, and that offsets the cost of the bonds, which would be about 4 and 1/2. So we're ahead. It allows, they call it arbitrage, and they allow it with these type of bonds. And a lot of communities have taken advantage of it. I know Royal Oak did to the tune of about 260 million because they did their OPEB funding as well. But I would like to look at OPEB for us, but we don't have the bonding capacity to borrow for OPEB. But pay-as-you-go is working for us for retiree healthcare because, again, we eliminated the legacy cost several years ago. So I'll say it again, our children and grandchildren are going to be in great shape because Claussen's going to have very low millage and very little debt. So.
Mark, can you explain in a short, couple paragraphs to the people out here and on TV what MERS is?
MERS is the Municipal Employees Retirement System. Years ago, it was under state control. It's no longer, it's a private entity under state authority, but it's no longer controlled by the state. But a majority of the communities in Michigan have, are with MERS as the pension funding arm. They do all the investments for many communities. Some have, it was difficult to leave, it's less difficult now, but they've done well for us. I know our auditor used to always say, "All we've ever done is pay MERS whatever they asked for." So if we're in bad funding shape, it's not our fault. We've paid what they've asked. But now that they're accelerating funding, it's making it difficult for a lot of the communities because 43 percent funded's not very high, but we've paid everything they've asked us to over the years. To fund it in 11 years would put a burden on us, so extreme that we would have to make additional cuts just to make the payments. So MERS is our defined benefit pension handler. We also have MERS as our defined contribution plan, and we're even considering adding a 457 defined contribution plan through MERS as well. But I don't have complaints with them because their CEO has listened when we've said we need more time. We moved our, they called it Option B, we moved our payment schedule once before, but the accelerated payments with the lack of revenue to replace it won't work for us. So they've looked at trying to work with us and fix that. And I will give MERS credit because MERS has someone directly in contact with Treasury who's been in contact with them, telling them what we're doing. So they've helped us.
Thanks, Mark. Madam Mayor, I move the 15-year amortization extension agreement between municipal employees' retirement system of Michigan, which is MERS, and the city of Claussen be approved and to authorize city manager Mark Pollak to sign the agreement.
Support. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Malone.
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett.
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Yes.
Mayor Woolley.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
And the amortization extension agreement between municipal employees' retirement systems of Michigan and the city of Claussen has been approved. The next item on the agenda is consideration of approving the 2018 schedule of public meetings for city boards and commissions. The city's required by the Opens Meetings Act to publicize and make public notice of the meetings that will be handled for the entire year.
Madam Mayor, I move the 2018 schedule of public meetings for the city of Claussen boards and commissions be approved, posted on the City Hall bulletin board, and published in the Daily Tribune.
Support.
I have a few questions or comments. I noticed that the January 3rd on the city website, it's still on the city website, that there's a coffee with council that particular evening. And I was curious on Wednesday, the 3rd, on why we don't have a council meeting on August 2nd.
January 2nd?
No, I'm sorry. It said August in the notice. It said a Wednesday, August 8th.
Because of the election. I need to use the room here for the AV.
Oh, there's an August election?
Yeah, the primary.
I know that there's the November.
It's a big, it's a primary next year.
Yeah. And City Hall's closed on January 2nd, right? Is that why we're?
Correct. That's why we moved it. I will update the website once this is approved and everything is set.
Perfect. Thank you. Was there any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Moffett.
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Yes.
Mayor Woolley.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Malone.
Yes.
And the 2018 schedule of public meetings for city boards and commissions is approved. The next item on the agenda is list of bills.
Madam Mayor, I move we pay the bills as approved.
Support.
Is there any questions?
I do have one question for you, Mr. Pollak. If you could address retiree opt-out of retiree healthcare and the payouts that happened as a result of that.
Yeah, we have, I think we started offering this about eight years ago. We didn't have an option for retirees to opt-out of possibly a spouse coverage, so we added, we made that available to retirees. It saves us money because the cost of the healthcare with their spouse was more than the opt-out. So we asked our existing retirees if any of them had coverage through a spouse, if they'd be interested, and we have four, I believe, now that get coverage. And we pay, I think, once they get to the post-65 coverage, it's $3,000, and if they're on the pre-65, it's $5,400. But again, it still saves us money and keeps them from being doubly insured. We had people that were adding back onto our health insurance when they retired just to have the coverage because we didn't have an opt-out option. So we found out with Cornerstone's help that it would make a lot of sense for us to offer that to retirees as well. So we do that as a stipend.
Great. Thank you.
And I had a question. There was an expense for a thermostat being put in the museum. Was that not included in our recent HVAC system that we put over there?
If there's a bill for it, then I would say no. I'll double-check with Melody to see if it was.
Check 79394.
Okay.
And then the other one was the fire hat stock design expense. I believe this was probably for the fire department's open house.
Yes.
But I just wanted to, it seemed larger than I was expecting it to be.
I can get you the detail on that as well. What, I'm sorry, what number was that one?
I thought I wrote it down in here, but I do not have it. It says fire hat stock design.
Okay. I'll find it. I'll find it and send you the detail.
I think that if you look at the details on that, it looked like it was part of their open house. I think they have the children's fire hats that they.
Right. I just, I didn't realize we'd budgeted that much for that particular event. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Yes.
Mayor Woolley.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Malone.
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett.
Yes.
And Mr. Kingsup, do you have an attorney's report for us?
Only a brief one. And I thank the mayor for this because she received an email from the state of Michigan regarding the MMFLA regulations, and she asked a very appropriate question. Do I need to do anything? And I said, "No." So I printed off 33 pages of the regulations. And if there's anything that you deem interesting, I will certainly reference it, but I'm going to look at it, give you an idea about it. I know we're not taking a position, we're still getting calls every week about, are we opting in? And I say, "No." But I think you ought to at least be aware of the regulations. So I'll give you a memo on that.
Thank you.
For the rest of us, can you tell us what that is?
Yeah.
Just what was MMF?
Yeah. Michigan Medical Marijuana.
Gotcha.
Facility Act.
John, what about Bowman?
It's planned in December. We, consumers is holding up on shutting off the power. So the latest we got, Harry was working on it, and the last email I saw was it would be in the middle of December.
Okay.
Electricity was cut off, consumers were slow.
All right.
Now, some people did have another idea that might be appropriate, terminating the building, but I cautioned that that might be a little illegal.
Really?
Pontiac Silverdome, ring a bell?
Yeah, Pontiac Silverdome, right.
They're just suggestions.
Is that it?
That's it. Sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Pollak, the manager's report?
Just a couple of updates regarding SACRA and our leaves. The SACRA facility, we haven't had our monthly board meeting. We'll get a full update next week on that, but the plan, I believe, is going to move into January before they reopen the facility. But they are making good progress. Surprisingly enough, they were waiting for DTE to establish power there, and that was the holdup. But I think they have a firm commitment from them in the week before Christmas. So once that's done and they make sure everything's up and running, that facility should be back open, I think, soon after the New Year. It will be great once it is because it's, I would encourage, when they do open, they'll have an area for people to observe and watch, and, you know, kids will be able to visit. I know it's a popular field trip for kids to see the new equipment. It'll be very impressive, and I would encourage anyone in the SACRA communities to go take a look at it when it's up and running. I wanted to commend the DPW again for leaf season. Strange year for leaves. They seem to come down later and slower for some reason. We did run back through the city. I know Councilmember Moffett noticed there was a lot of piles out on the weekend. Doug will generally go out and assess, and if there's a lot. Couple of trucks had already been switched over, but they took everything at their disposal, and they went through the entire city yesterday and got every leaf that was available. I know that made some people upset. We're not trying to make people mad that we told to bag them last week, but our plan was to be done Thursday, and that was a week beyond normal. But because of the amount of leaves that had still fallen, we picked them up throughout the city on Monday and got them cleared. So any leaves left, please either put them in containers with the SACRA sticker on them for yard waste or bag them. They'll pick them up curbside tomorrow and next Wednesday, and then they will no longer pick them up curbside, but you can take them throughout the winter to the SACRA facility, and they'll process them through the compost so they can continue to be taken there. But curbside, you'll have tomorrow and then next Wednesday to put them out. But I think, the good news is I think the majority of them were picked up by going that extra day, so. And like I say, I want to commend the DPW. They, it's hard. I don't know if you've ever watched them. It's hard work, especially for the guys that are outside the trucks trying to get the leaves up. We were fortunate that we didn't have snow, and we didn't have a lot of wet leaves, so they were able to use the vacuum trucks pretty well. But I don't know how many roll-offs they did this year, but it was probably a little behind normal because of the way the leaves came down. But I just wanted to commend them for their hard work again and another successful leaf season. That's all I had.
Is there any unfinished business?
I had pleasure having three young boys from the PAC 1095 last night come by my house, and we had a meeting. It was kind of hard having a meeting with six, seven-year-olds, but they wanted to know about politics, and of course, I had to be very careful what I said to them, how we do it, and they really got off the beaten path a lot and thought my jukeboxes were computers. They had never seen them before, and so it was quite interesting. But to the people running the Cub Scout PAC 1095, all the work you do with these kids, I think it's fantastic and great, and I enjoyed the boys being there. So that's about it.
Thank you for doing that.
Want to thank DPW also. They did a wonderful job. Now's their time to shine. Now it's coming.
Anything else? Anybody with new business before I start my list?
This may be, this may be on your list, Mayor Woolley, but tomorrow, the Blair Memorial Library is hosting an Hour of Code sponsored by 24G. This is for second through fifth graders. It's tomorrow, Wednesday, 6:00 p.m. Really encouraging children in the area of STEM, and it just sounds like a great opportunity there.
What time was that at?
Six o'clock.
It sounds very, very interesting, right up their alley. Get some computer programmers again. I also wanted to thank all of our city staff that works so hard for the Tree Lighting Party, and thank all of council for being there. It was really nice for everybody to attend, and we had a large turnout. The weather certainly helped, but couldn't happen without the DPW, the Parks and Rec Department. It was taped here by Mr. Oulet. Melody opened up the Historical Museum for people to go and visit. So I just really wanted to thank everybody for a great community and city staff effort for making a great event. And so it's that time of year, and I want to remind everybody that the Claussen Goodfellows mission is no child without a Christmas. And if you want to consider donating an unwrapped gift for a local family in need, you can drop it off here at City Hall or contact the Goodfellows at 248-407-5522, or email claussengoodfellow@gmail.com. This coming week, the high school has their musical performance, and it is Thursday through Saturday. Unfortunately, I could not find the times that it started, but I'm sure if you give them a call, they'd be happy to help. Lunch with Santa is this Saturday, and it's sponsored by the Claussen's Women's Club, but make sure you have to buy your tickets in advance, but it's always a great event. Next Tuesday, the 19th, at 7:00, is the High School Holiday Jam, and it's a great time. Everybody's welcome to join in on stage. Just bring your instrument, and if you plan on just watching, bring a canned good. That's the admission. Messy Church is December 20th at 6:00. And don't forget that the Claussen Historical Museum is open Wednesday and Sunday from 2 to 5. Right now, you can see. Right now, you can see the period Christmas decorations, but they'll be packing them away in January, and the staff will be preparing for a new exhibit. So this is your last month to see the general store display. That's all I had. Public discussion? Does anybody like to say anything? Public discussion is closed.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Wait for what you.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Woolley.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Malone.
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett.
Yes.
Councilmember Olber.
Yes.
Thank you, and have a great evening.